As we get ready for our April 26th annual meetings, we're just giving you the opportunity to ask some questions and make comments about materials that you've received to get you ready for that meeting. We're really sorry that we can't see you in person, but this is the second best, believe me, wonderful to see all of you. What we're going to do tonight is that we'll start out with prayer from our senior minister Jeff, and then I'm going to let Sarah tell us how we can ask questions and make comments, and what kind of the rules are with this many people being on this Zoom meeting. And then I'm going to introduce to you people that will respond to your questions, and then we'll be ready to hear from you. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff for our opening prayer.
Nice to see all of your faces, my friends. Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we're grateful that we have technology that brings us together even though apart we are one. Thank you for this time for us to discuss things that are being planned and dreams that are in the works, in hopes that when we're back together, we will continue to do the good work you call us to do as a church. I pray that you will use these opportunities for us to think and plan and pray and be together to prepare us for all that you invite us to do. Thank you for being our faithful God. Thank you for being with us even in days like we're in now. Give us the hope and the peace. Bring back the joy that we desire. And Lord, we pray that we will continue to be the church you call us and want us to be. For we pray this in your name and all God's people said, amen.
So we are so glad you could be with us. And what we'd like to do is have the people that helped make these presentations that I hope you got to see be here to answer the questions. So if you have any questions about the budget, I'm going to ask that you direct your questions to Jason Phillips, and I'll have Jason say hi, so we see where he is, Jason.
Good evening, everyone.
And John Seberg.
Thanks, Pat. Hope everybody's okay. Good to see you.
So John and Jason will answer questions about the budget. If you have any questions about the foundation, Ben Stone is here.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see everyone. I've missed all of you.
And then if you have any questions about the proposal from the Blessing Initiative, Lance Stanky, who is the head of the Ministry Action Team there, Lance?
You're good, Lance.
So there you have it. You have John and Jason for the budget. You have Ben for the foundation. You have Lance for the Blessing Initiative. And Jeff, you're in charge of all the other questions.
Oh, boy.
So we're ready to take questions for any questions that you have.
And if you have questions, you can either raise your hand or chat some. All right, I see one from Donna and Charlie. Let me unmute you and... Oh, there you go. You're good.
Yeah, thanks. So I was really super excited to see that we are going to put a second service as kind of a priority for sometime in the near... I won't say the near future because the future is really hard to talk about right now in some ways. But what made it, I think, more exciting for me was not only was there just talk about it, but there was actually money that was going to be put aside. And so it was kind of touched upon a little bit in one of the presentations, or maybe in two of the presentations. Can you kind of address out a little bit more about kind of what your vision is and more specifically about the timing for that?
You know what? I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then I'm going to tee up Sarah because Sarah is really going to be on point for this second service. But what I will say, a couple thoughts, is that we are anxious to have a second expression of worship at Colonial Church. We are so excited about the way we do traditional worship, and we do it as well as anybody does it. And I think with the people who are in the pulpit, with the music that we offer, with our great facility, and with the way we do it. But we really would like to draw a different aspect from our community and create a place where they feel welcome with the style of worship that they're interested in, and just to be able to do some new things that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate in traditional worship, but might be a draw or encouragement or inspiration to others. So that's pretty exciting to think about.
Yep. Yes, sorry, I was just muting. Yeah, no, thank you so much for your thoughts and also for your excitement. And that also like makes my heart even like actually I feel pretty emotional and excited. You know, I mean, this has been a conversation that we've been having for a while at Colonial. And, you know, having just started two years ago at Colonial, you know, coming in and then by that first fall that I was here, we no longer had a contemporary expression for music. And some of you have heard this, you know, I grew up in church plants and/or church restarts, and that's long been a place of passion of mine, but really valuing intergenerational aspects. I really value that in church, and that hasn't always been my experience in, you know, in church starts or church plants. And so I think one of the opportunities we really have right now at Colonial, I think, is such an incredible rich history, clarity about our core values, and a unique and distinctive, I think, place that we occupy in the church community in the Twin Cities. And so I think my wonder, even when I first started, was what would it look like for us to really deeply invest in that service and in a way that's in alignment with, you know, all of the values of who we are as a community that's, you know, holding space for people to wrestle and to risk and just to be the church in this particular way. And so as we've been talking, though, and just that real passion about wanting to restart an expression, some of how we've been talking about it is in terms of gathering a group of people who are like, I'm in, you know, because that's one of the powerful things that happens in, you know, in starting a ministry up or kind of restarting something is asking and inviting a group of folks to all come together to work on that. And so that is, I think, what we're just beginning to now having. We got Jeff installed, or Jeff voted in as our senior minister. I think we figured out some rhythms with the time of COVID and being church. And then, you know, also now I think we're at a place where Jesus has risen, and we can now live in that resurrection life. And I think part of that is then working on building this. So what we've been talking about, and we were just today, this last week, is in the time when we don't know when we'll be able to worship in physical body together, even right now, actually, beginning to incorporate some contemporary, you know, whatever air quotes that exactly means, and to integrate that into another service that we would stream on YouTube and Facebook and utilize that as an opportunity to identify both within our current Colonial Church family, but then more broadly, are there other people who would say, hey, I want to be part of building this thing together and working on this kind of a worshiping community as a part of Colonial Church? And so I think that's what we're working on right now. And Andrew Zhao, who's our Youth and Emerging Adults Minister, he and I have been talking, and then we've been talking with Jeff and Leah and others from our team about what that might look like. And so if that is something that you're interested in and have a heart for, I would love to hear from you. And then I think us figuring out how both now and then as we would build forward, how can we work on that together? But I also am really grateful that we're putting some intentional funding so that it's, you know, not just us talking about possibly doing it, but really fleshing out the details and planning and co-conspiring with God about what that can look like.
I think last I heard in my last conversation with Sarah about this is I think there's already somewhere around 40 people who have stepped up and offered their support and their encouragement and their kind of their thumbs up. So it's good news.
Yes, I have what I call like my nice hit list, which is really just a group of folks who are indicated that. So I'd love if you or someone you know is interested to add your name to that. So it looks like our next questions and wonders and stuff here that we have, I just want to at least acknowledge I've seen this, is from Debbie and/or Rick Tries. And then I also saw one from Jeff and Suzanne Pope of a raised hand that had come through. I see another couple of things here in the chat. I'll note that next as well. But just before moving on, does that, Donna, start a conversational response back or other things you'd want to say right now, Donna?
Yes, thank you, both Jeff and and... Thank you both for answering that and giving a little bit of more clarity to that. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so let me, I'll go then, I think Debbie and Rick Tries. I think you should be unmuted now, and go ahead.
In the presentation on the initial expenditures from the Blessing Initiative, there was a passing comment that families moving forward was looking to house six families at a church for the duration of whatever we're in the middle of right now. Has there been any discussion about Colonial being one of those facilities?
Yes, I've had a couple of conversations with Laura, who is the director. And it appears right now, and I'm going to talk with her actually again tomorrow, is it appears right now that we're not really in a position to be able to do that right now. It would think we have 88,000 square feet, you'd think to be able to. But the problem with is, how do we best quarantine those families? And how do we best support and protect our own staff that would need to come in and out of the building? And also volunteers who would be coming in and out to do the food and things like that? We just haven't, we just have not gotten those answers answered in a way that would put us in a position of saying yes, which is probably why so many other churches have decided not to be in that conversation as well. We're not quite done with it. I'm going to talk to her again tomorrow. But it just seems like we would probably not only do a disservice to the families that would come into the building, but also a disservice to our staff and possibly some of our membership when we actually were able to open up.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, it would seem like, okay, it's a big enough space, you know, families go this way, this way. And then, you know, what if one of the families came into the building and was, you know, was already symptomatic? And what would that do? So again, we're not completely done with it because it seems like there should be a way to do this, but right now the risks outweigh, I think, the gain.
I just wanted to know if we were in that conversation, and I'm glad we are.
Yeah, good question.
Thank you very much, Debbie. All right, we'll go to Jeff and Suzanne Pope, and then I have a question in the chat box I'll go to next. So let me just make sure here, Jeff and Suzanne, you want to mute yourselves? Or do you need me to get them? You're unmuted, great.
I guess this goes back to the second service idea. And, you know, I've been around Colonial a long time, as have some of the rest of you, and we have started and stopped the second service so many times. And it's kind of sad because we start it and then again it dwindles down and we stop it. I mean, and I think this is the whole purpose of your group. I want to encourage you, you know, we got to do something different than just, we've got a second service. I mean, there's contemporary services all over town, you know. So it's just having it is not unique. And do you have any preliminary ideas of what you think we can do to serve a different need than the rest of the world is already serving?
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Can I respond for a minute, and then Jeff, you tag in here? So, okay, so right when I first came, you know, when I first had just started at Colonial and I went to the second service, I'll just, I'll be very candid about my own. My own experience was that at that particular moment, it was very clear that Colonial, that we knew how to do the first service really well, and that that was kind of like, that was the main service. And second service was really second. And wonderful people who were involved and present, but it was just clear, you know, from staffing and at that moment musically, et cetera, that it wasn't really clear how, like, what the identity of the service was and that it was very, very important to us. And I know there had already been that back and forth anyway. And so I think part of in having conversations with Jeff and with others, I think part of this whole idea of getting a group of people who are all invested, you know, in building it together, that there's that... We understand that there is also a reciprocal commitment to this from the staff, from the lay leadership, like our whole community. This is something that we're not going to just go back and forth on, but we're really committed to, and that we want to collectively discern. Like, right, there are a lot of really great contemporary expressions of worship. There's places with bands that are huge and smoke and all sorts of other things. What I, though, think is particularly unique about Colonial is that the majority of those churches don't have the legacy of integration of head, heart, and hands in the same sort of way, and the unique set of values of what does it mean to be a worshiping community. And I think there is something unique about that. That is something, quite frankly, that a lot of my friends who grew up, who grew up in the church and don't go to now, they would find appealing. And in talking to some of them, they're like, yeah, actually, that sounds really good. And so I think it's not just, you know, some of the music, for instance, at quite a few of the services was all early 90s praise music, and it was done more in that type of a style. And so even with that, us being intentional about asking, what does music look like in view of what our values are as a community of faith? And how are we going to get at that? And how do we want to build this thing together and discern what God might be inviting us to do? And so I think those are some of the things that we were trying to keep in mind in even beginning to think about how do we build a thing.
The other thing I would add to that is that our purpose in starting a second service is not to compete with some of those big box churches. That's really not the point. Really, the point is to just create a different expression that meets some other needs and different needs for community and still being truly Colonial, but expressing itself in a way that would be more inviting to a different demographic. So, and I think the fact that we're going to start with a group of people who want to already be engaged and to listen well to them and to help them to give us their best ideas and that we can think about how that's going to be incorporated so we know that it's meeting needs right from the get-go, as opposed to, you know, recognizing our need and starting it. Because you're right, Jeff, we have started and stopped it a number of times. And sometimes you just have to quit things that aren't working anymore. On the other side of it, I think if we are intentional going into it, knowing the demographic we're trying to reach, trying to be clear of what the focus is, I think we're going to have better success.
Okay, but this does not involve upper room at all, right?
No.
Okay, well, we've probably done more than enough time on this, so thank you.
Thank you. Let me, we have a question here then in the chat. I was glad to see that there would be a mail-in ballot. Would someone explain how the voting, like, the voting, like, will be reporting all the candidates listed? Are there any questions to be voted upon dependent upon discussion? And if so, in what form does discussion occur? And so I think just, you know, Pat, I'll let you discern who this goes to, but just how kind of the reporting of the voting is going to happen? And are there any things that are going to be dependent upon discussion in order for there to be votes cast about them? So, Pat, I'll let you just where that goes.
Okay. Okay, that's a really good question, and I really was going to comment about that at the end. Everyone is getting a paper ballot, and this is allowable with the state of Minnesota and with our bylaws. And the very first question we'll ask you if you will agree to vote with a paper ballot instead of a show of hands or a voice vote. We need 75 of you, that's our quorum, in order for us to proceed. So we really want to encourage you, once you get that ballot, to be sure and answer the ballot questions and then send it back to the church. If you have any questions about anything that's on the ballot, we won't have another town hall, but there is a place on the website, Q and A. Just send your questions to moderator@colonialchurch.org, and we will answer those questions on a daily basis. What you will be asked to vote on in the ballot is the slate of officers, which we do every year. You also will be asked to approve the 2020-2021 budget. And you also will be asked to approve a special request from the Blessing Initiative to release $200,000 of the 1 million that they currently have in the Blessing Initiative to meet the needs of some of our nonprofit ministry friends that are on the front line during this pandemic. So it's pretty self-explanatory. It's easy to read, easy to understand, you just circle yes or no. But the most important thing is that we do need them back by April 24th. So as soon as you get them, if you have questions, please send your questions to moderator@colonialchurch.org. If you're okay with the way everything is written, then just put it in the envelope and mail it back to us. Every member should have received a ballot. So if you don't have a ballot, please let us know. If you don't have a ballot by this weekend, please let us know.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you. I'm going to unmute here some of our friends who have called in, and I'm going to issue an invitation. If you called in on your cellphone or landline, I am working to unmute you down the list here because we're having some background noise. And so I just want to allow an opportunity. Is there anyone who has called in on a cellphone or a landline who would like to ask a question? And so will you please state your name and your question? Okay, just one more call right now. I'll come back to you all again later. Anyone on the cellphone or landline who wants to ask a question at this moment? Okay, then I am going to mute you all here in just a minute. But we'll go next to Paul Semenari.
Don't forget Rick and Debbie Tries.
Oh. Do you have another question, Rick and Debbie? Because I'll re-add them back onto the list then. I thought that was from the last question. So I'll come back if you indeed do re-raise your hand. But I'll go next to Paul Semenari, and then I have C's iPad after Paul Semenari. So we'll go Paul. Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks. I just had, Sarah, this is probably best addressed to you because you were speaking about that second service. So it's a follow-up to Jeff Pope's question. Is that are there three or four things you can articulate that you formulated as essentials for what you're trying to develop in that second service? Because like many of us in our generation, we've seen a ton of different successful and unsuccessful efforts made at a more contemporary service. And none of them seem, they all seem to have a life of, you know, three to seven years sometimes. I don't know, maybe, I don't know what the data would say, but they last a while and then they kind of fizzle out. So maybe that's normal. Anyway, I'll let you respond to that. That's my question.
Yeah, so the data would suggest that actually, I think it's something like 90% of all kind of new church service or new church births don't last. And that's what, you know, I came most recently from, you know, First Cup downtown Minneapolis, which was a church revitalization effort. And that's where, you know, I think denominations have been really intentional about funding and kind of having the whole holistic team model of where instead of just kind of like expecting it to all be on some one magical minister or something, you know, or just on money, that it's about the community as well. And that's typically the most significant reasons that like a new church start or a new service start doesn't continue is either because there's a lack of funding, a lack of vision, and a lack of people, though, who really say, no, this is really meeting my needs. And then sometimes there can also be a sense of like, is the thing that's happening right now a thing of beauty? You know, so like, our numbers weren't huge in our second service, but there were people who were every week coming. And so we're going to have to be intentional about deciding what does success mean, you know, too? And what are the ways that we want to get at naming and defining that? And so for me, a few different ways of being intentional about this is, so we have a long history, we have community support, we have financial funding and backing. If we get a team of folks, and I would love for us to have at least 60 people who've said, yes, I want to spend, I want to commit to the next three years. I'm going to be part of building this thing. I'm going to be intentional about inviting people in my life. We're going to wrestle with what this looks like together. I think that that's another really important element. And then I think, again, one of the pieces to me has been, as we're really clear about how our values as part of this broader community of faith shape our worship, like, I want our worship and everything we're doing to be resonant with the values of who Colonial Church is and to have that thoughtfulness and that deep breadth and the large tent and, you know, these sorts of things, like, you know, Jeff was saying. If we just go in and we're like, oh, we're going to create the next flashy service, I don't think that, like, there's other people who do that better. And I want to do what it means to be Colonial Church well. And for me, that's real, it's authentic. It's a place where people can wrestle with faith. It's, you know, this space for us to not all have to agree, but to be a congregation and involved in those sorts of things together. So I don't think, I don't have a magic pill, but I have a really great community in this church and more broadly. And I think this is where we're really excited. And part of the intentionality in amping up our youth program and with the Youth and Emerging Adults is also like recognizing that we really need to invest in having really great childrens in youth programming and making those bridges and transitions from children into young adults and young married, young singles, that there's a space where there's a critical mass and they know that there's good programming for the whole lifecycle of their families and young adult lives. By doing that, we really are wanting to be intentional about making possible the second service because if you don't have a good youth group, you know, or stability in your youth department, if you don't have these other things, that's also going to be a real challenge. But I think we're getting, like, I think we're at a point where we feel like we are really grateful and fortunate that the church has said yes to investing in those things. So now the next step is, okay, like, we have communications, we have youth folks. Let's go do the thing and work on this together and just see what God does in our midst and be, you know, be the church in that way.
So. I would just add one more comment that, you know, whenever you do a church plant to have success, you have to have some folks that are already there and willing to make that commitment, as Sarah was saying. But I think one of the things that we, I think one of the things that oftentimes we do is we build, if we build it, they will come. And I think it's always better to start the game when the stands are full. So I think one of the things we're going to try to do well is kind of sub-plant a group of people that, as Sarah said, they're going to be already committed to that with not only attendance, but also with their investment of energy and volunteering and being a part of helping to create that community. So I think that would be the one thing that Paul, I think, would be the takeaway of that, being very intentional about that, as opposed to being kind of that second service because we need to have that. This is another service that we are deeply invested in and committed to inviting people to.
Yeah. Thanks, Paul. I'm going to go to C's iPad, and then I'll go next to, I have a chat comment. And then I'll go to Annette Anderson after that. So let me unmute you here because in front of me, I'm so excited to find out who C's iPad is because I don't know.
Actually, I should know. Kathy Tinsky.
Oh, hi, Kathy. Go ahead.
And mine is a simple yes or no question. So any questions that are posed and put on the website during this process of different questions we may have that we're going to be discerning on via ballot, will that be posted for all to see on the website, Pat? Or will that just be a one-on-one response?
The question will be there for everyone to see, and the answer will be there for everyone to see. If someone wants to send a confidential question, they could send it to me personally if you want, or to Jeff or Sarah or John Seberg. Any one of us could answer the question for you. If you're not comfortable posting your question on the website. Any, any one of us could answer the question for you if you're not comfortable posting your question on the website. But what we are hoping is that some of the questions would be ones that many people would want to ask. And so we'll put, put the question there and whatever the question is about, the appropriate person will answer it. So for instance, if it's a question about the budget, then Jason Phillips will answer the question.
Thanks so much, Kathy. Okay, to the question I had, Pat, this will be for you. There's a question. So is the mail-in paper ballot the only way to vote? And then next after this one, we'll go to Annette.
Yes, this year, the only way to vote is with the ballot that has been mailed to you. We've been very careful to mail out as many ballots to each household as there are members. And this year, that is the way to vote. Now, we do need a quorum for our annual meeting. And the way we will get a quorum is that we will have 75 ballots in hand, for sure. We anticipate having more than that, but our quorum will be such when we have 75 people voting. So this is the only way we can do it this year.
I just want you to know, as your new senior minister, I said we should do paper ballots or drones. But that got voted down. So, sorry.
All right. Thank you very much for that question. Oh, chat person question. Annette, I'm gonna unmute you and go ahead, Annette.
Thank you. So I wanted to just make a couple of comments about the budget. I, I want to give a big thank you to the finance committee because I know they have to have been working very hard. I particularly appreciated that we set the giving target lower, recognizing the reality of where we are. We have some people that, that are going to be experiencing hard times. I have really appreciated the low-key church that, or the low-key approach that's been taken in our televised services about giving. You've continued to mention it, but, but it's been a very appropriate way. Jason, you did a really nice job of talking about, but we also have people that are very blessed and are also very generous. So I, I just want to say, I thought that was a, a really great way to approach this year's budget. And then I appreciate that instead of the historical discussion of do we cut staff or do we cut programs? That what we did was decide we're blessed with reserves in the church and we're going to use them. And we're going to keep our priorities and we're going to keep up with the staff and keep up with the programming. So I, I just really want to congratulate you on what I think is a very well-put-together and thoughtful budget. That's all.
Thank you so much for your, your comments. And yeah, thank you to Jason and the finance committee and everyone who worked, has worked really so much on that. Let's see, I, I do not at this moment have any other named question. So I'm gonna again unmute our friends who have called in. If you've called in and, and you would like to issue any questions, now would be a great opportunity for you to do that. You don't have to obviously, but if you do have any, I'm going to give you another chance right now. And then if those of you who are actually on the app, if you think of a question, now would be the time to raise your hand or send me a chat. And I think that, any questions from our friends who've called in?
This is Larry Lauker. Can you hear me?
I can. Yep. Go ahead, Larry.
All right. Well, I, I haven't mastered Zoom, but I figured out how to do the audio. I have a question regarding the, the million-dollar set aside that we, we've undertaken and the $200,000 that's now being released. I'm just wondering, is the $200,000 part of the million or is it separate?
Thank you so much, Larry, for your question. Pat, who would you like to send this to?
Lance. Lance. Lance would be the one to answer it.
Okay, Lance, thank you. Go ahead. Can you unmute yourself? Here we go. And Larry, I'm gonna mute you for a minute here while he's answering. Go ahead.
Hey Larry, we miss you at Dudes and Donuts. It's, the $200 is part of the million, or the $200,000 is part of the million dollars. So I hope that, that helps.
Hey Lance, would you be willing to say a sentence or two more about kind of what went into that decision?
Sure. So I don't even remember when it was, like a month ago now, we had a meeting and it was right before the, right before the stay-at-home initiative was mandated. And Lyndon Ival came to the meeting with a, a pretty heavy heart about all the unemployment numbers that she was hearing on the radio on the way in. It was interesting because she walked in and the sentiment was pretty much the whole committee. Everybody was kind of starting to impact in the immediacy of what, what was actually happening due to the coronavirus. And she proposed, and we also were talking about the, the Colonial Church had put up and was asking for a match for. And so what, what she proposed and we all agreed to was, wouldn't it be great if we, you know, had 100,000 go into those organizations, but then we doubled that with another 200,000 to really make an impact? Because, you know, our program, the Blessing Initiative itself is really more focused on a long-term strategic plan, looking at a partner for the next, you know, period of years to kind of work together with. But we also recognized that we needed to pivot. We needed to do something now for people who are in need. And so we partnered with Paul Bertelson and his ministry action team and decided that, you know, trying to help those core partners that are already, that we've already been supporting for years. He made sure that they had not only capacity, but they were going to be able to use the, the money efficiently and, and right away. And so that's where that all genesis and it would probably be best, actually, at some point, you gotta watch the video by Lyndon Ival because it really was her heart that stirred the whole, the whole thing into motion. So.
Thanks for that, Lance.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. And I'm gonna go then next to a question that I had here in our chat. There is a question. Can we say something more about any changes to the first service? I'm gonna throw that one to you, Jeff, Lindsey?
You know, it's, it's, I would say it's more of a philosophy than, than specifics that I'm saying that, that we have been very intentional about that service. And because we have been intentional, and I don't want to take it for granted that we figured it all out. So are there some other people that we could have involved? Are there other people that we could draw in? I mean, I think one example would be our choral scholars. You know, we've had some, if you watch the Easter service, you got a chance to see our, our choral scholars and some of the young people that are still very interested in traditional music and, and, and that service. And maybe there's something more we could do with that, working with the college just. Is there something more that we can do in the ways that we draw more people into different participation into that service? I mean, it's more of the philosophy of saying, we're not going to just let that run on automatic pilot either. We're going to continue to be intentional about that, continue to do that well, continue to have the right people in place doing the, the things. I mean, we've got a, for instance, we have a, a welcome beloved task force that's working on, how do we take care of the people coming in that front door? Making sure they're welcome, making sure we get their information, making sure we make connections with them, making sure they don't just walk in the door and have a good experience and then walk out the door without feeling the love of the community. And they're working really hard at, at specific parts of that, working with the deacons, working with the ushers, working with Children's Ministry and our connection corner. I mean, all, we're thinking about all those aspects. And that's what I mean is, we're just not going to run it on automatic pilot. We're going to say, what are we doing that's really good? Is there anything we could do to make it better? Or should we just leave it alone? Or is there some other areas that we can, you know, work better on? You know, one, another example would be, we really haven't known for years kind of who's been at worship and who hasn't. And, and I know that's one of the areas that they're thinking about. How could we have a better understanding of who's coming and who's a part of our every, every week worship? How could we better connect with those folks? And that way we're following up when there's, when people are missing. And so it's just asking some of those questions we haven't asked for a while, how we can do that better. It's, it's a great question. And I guess that's my best answer.
Just one other, just to throw you a, a follow-up softball here. Could you say a little bit about some of the learnings from these last weeks with technology? Talk about how that might be shaping some things going forward.
I would think that you'd be better to do that, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna give it my shot. I, I just want you to know, I just want you to know, you, you hired a 61-year-old senior minister. Yeah, I know. Stop gasping. The reality is that, you know, I'm, I, I didn't know that I had the capacity in my 61-year-old brain to learn new things, especially about technology. I didn't even know there was such a thing as Zoom, maybe two months ago. But now I spend literally hours on Zoom. And I didn't really understand how we would do streaming very well. Would we just point a camera at the front of the church and go, there it is? No, that's not how you do it. And it's not how you do it well. We learned that because the first, first week we did it with Mark Patrick and I and a few others. That's kind of what we did. And we've, thank God, we've gotten better. But one of the things we have learned is that, I mean, the hundreds of people that are involved in our worship that wouldn't be able to get in our door on a Sunday morning because they're traveling, because they're not well, because they're just, their life situation is such that they couldn't get there on a Sunday morning. But boom, they, they pull it up on YouTube or Facebook and there they are. I mean, literally, we, we know for a fact, we've reached 10 states or 12 states and at least two other countries where people are streaming in, are, are getting our services and are being blessed by it. So we know now we can't go back. We, we're going to continue to need to leap into the 90s and, and, and get caught up with some technology. I'm just joking. We may be able to try to get to 2010. And, and we've, I mean, and I cannot even, I cannot even tell you how much I appreciate Jessica Kruger and all of the, the deep learning she's had to do to help us learn. She, in partnership with Sarah and with some other professionals, have really done a great job of helping us get better and better each week. You saw Holy Week, Easter was, we, we brought in some other resources to help us with that. And we're going to just try to get better and better, but we're not going to be able to go back to not doing it. And so as we go forward, we're going to have to learn how we're going to do that once we're back in the meeting house or the Great Hall doing our worship services. You know, how can we continue to use these tools so that our, our ministry can, can expand and we can have better engagement with our, with our membership or regular attenders? So.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Other questions or comments that you'd like to share? Sorry, Rick, were you trying to comment?
Yes, it's not a hand up, it's a thumbs up.
Okay. I've just never seen on the participant side list where it shows it that way. Yeah. Thank you for the thumbs up.
So I'll, I'll show you if I disapprove of what you're saying. Nobody else gets to learn that button, whatever that is. Hey, I would just, I, I know that there's some other good questions and I, I just want to encourage you to add, there's no, there's no bad questions. There's no dumb. I really would appreciate if you've got a question and you're not sure, just ask it. I can't tell you, I'm looking at the numbers. There's 54 of you that have given up a part of your evening to come on this and be a part of this town hall meeting. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and I'm impressed by that and I'm grateful for that. Because that, hey, that's, that's 54 of us that are engaged and want to know and want to at best understand what's going on and, and the decisions and how they got made. So that hopefully you're going to be feeling better about that vote when you make that. So I, I would just encourage you again, as Sarah's done a great job at helping facilitate this and certainly Pat has done a great job keying this up. But if you've got a question, this would be a great time to ask it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do another unmuting here of our friends who are calling in on the phone just to give one, one last call. If you've called in on a phone, I think I've now muted all of you. Any last questions from anyone who's on the phone, except for I missed one person?
This is Larry.
Hi Larry.
I'm just trying to put together some facts about the sale of the waters. What was the net proceeds to the church on the sale of the waters?
Thanks for the question, Larry.
So the net proceeds to the church are, it's, it's only about, let's just call it roughly a million dollars. We actually probably could get the exact number from Dick Primmeth, who I think is on. But the, the church itself has just really received a, a payment related to kind of the easement of our parking lot to the waters. The rest of the proceeds all went directly, well, let's just call it, they went to the foundation. There was, there was a separate entity that the foundation owned, received the proceeds as the first step. But then the funds from the waters functionally are all in the foundation. Only about a million dollars of the total proceeds are in the church.
What was, what was the net amount again?
Gosh, you know, it, it came in a couple of, of tranches. There was the initial sale and then there was the much more substantial amount that came when, when the water's building itself was sold. I mean, I believe that cumulatively, it's, it's six or seven million dollars.
Okay. Well, that, that's what I heard. Well, that was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. Were there any restrictions given the foundation about how that money could be used?
No. Well, I guess Ben, Ben, do you want to take that one? You're the master of all things foundation.
Sure. Am I?
You're good. Yep.
Okay. No, there, no, actually, Larry, there is no, there are no restrictions on those funds. But the method for those funds to be spent is the request needs to come through either the council or through staff and actually from staff, it goes through council. And then it would come to the foundation to be able to spend those funds. And Larry, if you wanted an exact number of the proceeds, I could certainly get that to you.
No, I, I don't, I don't need, I don't need an exact, I, I just think it's wonderful, the amount. Well, if there are no restrictions, but it has to come through the church council and the staff, that's satisfactory to me.
Okay, very good. And I'll also add that the foundation also is, is, performs our own due diligence about any request that comes through us. So we talk about it as well.
Thank you, Larry, for your questions. It's great to hear your voice.
Hey, Pat, could I, could I, could I take one or two more minutes? I, I want, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what, what you shouldn't do in terms like, I'm gonna call on Paul Bertelson if I might. Paul Bertelson is our missions director. And Paul, would you be willing to just share with these some people a little bit about what's happening with the tiny house idea?
Sure. Jeff knows that I've had kind of a real passion for housing and homelessness. And, and it was brought to my attention, a group in St. Paul of two women who have developed a concept of community-first housing, which entails working with a church and building small tiny houses that would be on the church's property and then using part of the church for community space, common kitchen, common living space and bathrooms to engage a community of people who happen to be homeless, along with people supporting them from the church. And they are seeking out both churches to host the concept, but also churches to help build the little houses or tiny houses. And I approached them back in December after reading a couple of articles in the paper about what they're trying to do and was really impressed with their thoughtfulness and leadership and, and their desire to see this come to fruition. Long story short, you know, sometimes, well, I should say it lots of times, God takes not-so-good stuff and, and can turn something good out of it. And that's what's happening right now where because of zoning laws, lots of opposition was there to prevent something like this from happening. But now the St. Paul City Council and city commissioners are closely looking at this and looking at giving a green light to creating the first one of these in St. Paul. And Jeff and I have been in conversation about the potential of, could we build one of these in our own parking lot? Because they are on wheels and then they would be driven over to this community site. And so it's, it's really an exciting opportunity. And so it's really an exciting opportunity for a church like Colonial to be very hands-on as far as a response to homelessness.
Kind of like a little mini Habitat for Humanity project right in our parking lot.
Yes, but be dripped to the end-user parking lot.
Yeah, pretty exciting stuff, anyway. Yeah, I just wanted you to hear that because that's some of the exciting stuff that is happening that nobody gets to really hear about until it actually comes to fruition and we're all of a sudden doing sign-ups for building a couple of tiny houses in our parking lot. But Paul's just done a marvelous job as Mark Patrick and Tony Jones and Michelle and Trev and so many of these folks that have recently come on that many of you folks have seen tangentially, but you don't maybe have had a chance really to get to know or to hear what they're doing. And I didn't list everybody, there's so many others, but there's so much good stuff that's happening. And I just thought there'd be one example you guys should hear and be excited about for your church.
Thank you, Jeff. Oh, moderator, Pat Peterson?
Yes, but I'd like to put Vice Moderator John Seberg on the spot. And just before we close, John, would you be willing to share a little bit of your vision for stewardship?
Sure, sure. Annette said it, I think, very well in terms of talking about the budget that we've brought forward shows flat giving this year over last year. And shows us, and that is a placeholder number. With pandemic issues, we really don't know what the giving level's going to be. And so we're renaming a stewardship committee. We're going to be setting it up as the generosity committee. There are two people who are known to all of you who have agreed to kind of co-chair it. This is just coming together now, so don't hold me to titles, et cetera. But both Steve Coleman and John Hobbs have said that they would gladly give some leadership to a group like that. And to really build a generosity theme and training, et cetera, throughout the entire congregation. So it's sort of born out of the immediate need to, pandemic-driven immediate need to get our hands around what our giving might be over this next 12 months of this budget cycle. But actually with a much longer range outcome, if you will, of just helping people understand what their financial engagement with the church might look like and what the, how powerful of a tool that is. And to be honest with you, and I would say I'm a classic example of this. Unless I've got somebody causing me to focus on some things like this in my own personal financial area, that's when I do my real thinking about what the church is. And we have had only low-key, but somehow generosity comes out of this congregation without very much coaxing and without very much data and all that kind of stuff. But so we're just trying to put a little bit of heart and soul into what ongoing stewardship/generosity looks like. But I will tell you that the theme of this year is to make sure that people are not feeling like they have to give when they really shouldn't be given. I mean, depending on how the economic impact on your family, we want to hear from those people who are hurting and find out if there's a way that we can help in one way or another.
Amen.
And then the people that can keep giving the same amount that they've been giving, that would be great. And the people who can afford to do more and who are willing to sign up to do more, we want to kind of corral up some of those thoughts and people as well. So that's the short-term kind of structure that we're gonna be seeing. The longer term is to be building in a whole concept, a whole culture around generosity. Not that this congregation hasn't been generous, but actually putting, you know, some kind of square corners around it and giving it some vocabulary that we can talk to over the foreseeable future. But we're having our first meeting tomorrow, as a matter of fact, to kick this off. It's been in the talking stages and it officially will get started tomorrow. And I know both Steve and John have some experience on stewardship kind of things. And I'm looking forward to partnering with them, as is Jeff and the rest of the pastoral staff, so. That's what I got.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I hadn't asked, I didn't let you know ahead of time, I was gonna ask you to do that, but it just seemed right, right now.
It's kind of like moderator hazing, the next moderator, that's what that was.
I don't know. John will be a wonderful moderator. I am thankful that all of you could join us tonight. I just, again, want to thank Jason and John for their work on the budget and the Finance Committee, which has been a big part of that. The HR Committee has been at work as well. And we had Vivian doing the nominations and working, the nominations committee working. Really, there has just been a lot of behind-the-scenes, particularly with the staff, to not only do Holy Week, but also get everything ready for this annual meeting. So you have a wonderful council, just the best ever. And just really want to thank all of them for their participation as well. The Blessing Committee has been meeting every week, if you can believe it, every week. So we have a wonderful team there. I just want to say to all of you that you just have a wonderful group of people here at the Colonial Church of Edina. And it has been my privilege to serve as moderator this past year. And I just am so excited about the future. I can't begin to tell you how wonderful I think it's going to be as we move forward together. So I just want to remind you that our annual meeting is on Sunday, April 26. It will happen right after the worship service. So just stay tuned, it'll be on YouTube, this will be live. So we'll be able to tell you the results of the balloting. And again, we do need you to look at that ballot, vote, and then return it to Colonial Church by the 24th of April, please. And then we'll tell you the results of the balloting and we'll introduce you to your new moderator. So looking forward to that on April 26, please join us. And in the meantime, send your ballots back, we need those. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Moderator Pat Peterson. We're so grateful for you and your leadership.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for being in church, even not gathered on Zoom. Have a great night.